Very good evening. On behalf of my fellow board members, I'd like to call the October 23, 2018 School Board Meeting to order, whether you in attendance here or watching from another location. My colleagues and I are pleased that you took the time to join us. As always, we appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. And while the board and Brevard Public Schools staff continues to remain committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in Brevard schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in this process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
This time Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for the flex, the outside flag today. This time, we're at that point where I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. And tonight, we'll go in a little different order, start with Ms. Belford.
Thanks, Mr. Craig, for putting me on the spot there. Couple of my recognitions are a little dated because I wasn't able to be with you all at the last board meeting. Wanted to give Dr. Mullins a shout out for his amazing performance as celebrity chef at Space Coast Junior Senior High School a couple of weeks ago. We went there, actually spent a big, big part of the day at Space Coast, but Dr. Mullins was challenged to go into the culinary class and serve as celebrity chef. He prepared fish tacos for the students and even convinced several of them to try the tacos that didn't want to eat fish. But I have to tell you, he did a phenomenal job. I was very impressed that he was actually able to like talk through, you would think he was a pro, like as he's cutting, he's telling them everything he's doing and different variations on spices and what different things taste like, and he was absolutely phenomenal. So, thank you, Dr. Mullins. I know you've been spending a lot of time in our schools with our students, and I appreciate that immensely, and you did a phenomenal job with those students that day. We also had the opportunity that day to do a tour of several areas of the campus at Space Coast, but had the opportunity to see their Space Coast Launch Program in action while we were there. And that is a phenomenal program that they are starting this year. It is a project learning-based program. Students come out of that program with both CTE certifications as well as AP credits, and they were doing some really just phenomenal work. So, congratulations to Space Coast for bringing that all together. We also had the opportunity, many of us had the opportunity to go on a tour of the port with Commissioner Wayne Justice. Wanted to thank him for that opportunity to learn more about what's going on out there at the port and how it's impacting our local economy and certainly impacting our schools as well. And then perhaps one of the most exciting things to happen lately was the graduation for our security specialists. For most of you, you probably have heard conversation over the past six, eight months or so about the direction we're going with our school safety, and we just graduated 27 security specialists that are deployed out to our schools at this point for the schools where we cannot yet place an SRO because officers are not available. The credentials of those individuals are absolutely amazing. We've put some information out through our social media and Facebook pages or email, that sort of thing, on the background of those individuals. I encourage you to take a look at it because I think it speaks volumes about the caliber of individual that we have on our schools at this time. And then, of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention that this evening is the final board meeting for both Mr. Ziegler and Mr. Craig, who will be moving on to continue to do great things for our students in our schools, I'm sure, in one way, shape, or form. But they have been amazing members of the board. Mr. Ziegler, when I came on board, the amount of information and mentoring and guidance that you provided was wonderful. I appreciate it immensely. Your organizational knowledge will be missed immensely. There's always, the amount of knowledge that you have in certain areas of this organization have been critical to us being able to move forward. And so, I thank you for all of your service. And Mr. Craig, from the campaign trail to the board, you have been a wonderful member of the team, wonderful leader in your role as chair, obviously, for the past year, but you bring a completely different perspective to the board that we appreciate immensely. And so, you too will be greatly missed, and I'm missed out now.
Thank you, Misty. Mr. Susan?
I also wanted to say thank you to John and Andy for multiple reasons. Andy, throughout many years, you supported me when there were things going on with the Superintendent's Insurance Advisory Committee, when it was on the campaign and everything else, and I appreciate everything that you've put forward towards me. And then I also appreciate everything that you've done since then as far as giving mentorship and guidance through some of the things that we had questions on. For John, I respect you tremendously for everything that you've had with your leadership. I respect you and listen to you, not so much other people, but I will listen to you. But when I met with you in Murdochs, and we sat down and I asked you questions about teacher raises and what you believed in and your political philosophy and how it was just right there, and it has not changed from that meeting till now, and I really appreciate everything that you did. Okay, now, the good stuff. So, I got to visit O'Gally High School, and let me tell you what's going on at O'Gally High School. Besides being one of the greatest trade schools, you would be amazed to know that we have the number one aviation school going on there. You have automotive where they're doing some huge muscle car that's inside there. They also have the marine mechanics where they have boats that come in there and they get redone. Huge opportunity on top of that. They do CAD. It's just an exciting place to be with all the kids doing hands-on exactly what we were looking for. When everybody says, "Where's the trades? Where that?" Well, go to O'Gally, because that's where they have a lot of them, and Principal Salmon's doing some amazing things over there. I got to visit Manatee, and not many people know, but later on today, we're going to approve a elementary school, that the footprint for the Viera Elementary School that's going south is almost identical to the one with Manatee with some other changes. But at Manatee, I will tell you, there was so much going on that I literally, I'm not kidding you, I thought that if you opened up a janitorial closet, there would be kids jumping out of there. They had a book fair inside of the library going on. They had inside the music room, they had multiple classes doing a presentation that they were going to do to staff. They had, and this was all going on at the same time as I was walking in there at the end of the day to speak at the faculty meeting. So, a lot of really good things, a lot of interactions, community involvement, people coming in from all around at Manatee Elementary School. I also want to give a shout out to Dave Lindeman. I think he's somewhere in here. He has what's known as the Capital Outlay Committee, where he meets with all the city managers from around the entire, there you are, Dave, good to see you. All the city managers from around our county, and what they end up doing is, is they discuss our growth and all of our impact issues. And he actually, when we went and did the projections for this year for student enrollment, he was, I think, .000135 percent off, which means that out of 68,000 kids, he was like 80 people off, which is tremendous to say that we have a district that long. And a lot of what that does through Suhan and the rest of the groups, it is amazing because we have all of our projections set for that for the future years, and that Capital Outlay Committee is amazing. I just want to say thank you for everything that you're doing there, Dave. I sat and spoke at Eastern Florida again to a bunch of future teachers, and the craziest questions that they ask when they want to, they say, "What is it like to teach? And what is it like that we're going to get into? And what are the things?" And I told them to just follow their heart, but to see that inspiration that is inside each one of those kids and to know that one day they're going to be inside of our classrooms and that they're going to be teaching our next generation is just phenomenal. Just so you know, Eastern Florida State has four colleges that they have at Palm Bay, Melbourne, Cocoa, and Titusville, where they have at least 100 people that are trying to take education courses to get advanced into our school system. I also wanted to say, just so you guys know, that our football teams are pretty awesome around here. There were three schools that actually qualified for the state playoffs, and next week, this Friday, we will have a host of more. And I would argue to say that the way the districts are set up, that our schools in our district has probably more state qualifying football teams percentage-wise than a lot of the other counties that are here. We play great football in here. We have some great football coaches, and there's a list of golf and volleyball and everything else that's going on, just some amazing sports that are going on. I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Thornton. I visited Sun Tree Elementary and did the Host School Lunch Day. So, they have the National School Lunch Day, and we did some, I served the kids a bunch of food, and I was actually trying to get discounts as I was serving it because I was giving them a half of a hamburger and stuff like that, and I thought that was hilarious. But we had such a great time when we were over there at Sun Tree Elementary School. And just so that everybody knows in here, Mr. Thornton actually changed over, and our school district changed over from the old styrofoam containers that we had prior to actually doing the more cardboard paper base so that we have them in the landfills that aren't going. That is a phenomenal thing for a district to do, and he gets a lot of credit for all the healthy choices and everything else that are going on. And then I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Mullins, to going to Rockledge on a school visit. We met with a lot of the staff there. We spent a lot of time in their ROTC area, where I did not know this, but they have the oldest shooting range in the entire county, and it is, it used to be that they used to use 22 rifles inside there and a bunch of other things. It's absolutely phenomenal. There's a thing called the Superintendent's Cup where the sharpshooters get to challenge each other. So, I challenged Dr. Mullins to a competition. So, if we win the competition, it's no longer the Superintendent's Cup, it's the School Board's Cup. And then we'll go that route. And then I just want to say thank you to the Junior Achievement Group for, they actually were at multiple schools with multiple kids. There was probably 300 or 400 of them total throughout the district that were at different schools, and they were using the students from our multiple Eastern Florida State colleges for that education program, and they were interning inside of our schools. So, that was two weeks. It was a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Wow. John, I'm just excited. We've got a great school district here. I mean, we've got to talk about it.
Yes, we do, and your passion shows through, and I appreciate it greatly. Ms. Deskovic?
I want to thank Wayne Justice also for the tour of the Cape that we took last Monday. It was very educational. We learned how we can be better partners with the Cape and maybe some even potential relationships in the future that we can build. I know Ms. Belford mentioned the graduation of the school safety and security specialists, but I don't want to pass up the opportunity to give all 27 of them and their families my expression of gratitude for them. Some of them left other careers, making a whole lot more to step into that role to protect our children. Some of them came out of retirement to step into that role to protect our children, and I have immense gratitude, as I know my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins do. A little odd shout out to a business partner of one of our schools or two of our schools, Over-the-Top Sammy's. Dr. Mullins and I had lunch there while we were visiting schools in Palm Bay, and they are located on Palm Bay Road. And if you're out there and you're looking for an excellent sandwich at lunchtime, I think we both would agree that they serve amazing sandwiches. They support several of our schools in Palm Bay. They bring sandwiches every Friday morning, I think, to our teachers, breakfast sandwiches, and just a tiny little business trying to get ahead. And so, as a community, if you're out there, I think you should try to support them. And last, the Brevard Schools Foundation is holding a hygiene supply drive. We have 3,000 homeless students in our district, 3,000. That's a huge number, and they are doing a drive for hygiene supplies so that teachers can have them on hand for students that would need hygiene supplies. So, the teachers can go and pick them up and keep them in their classroom and can give them to students as needed. But a shout out within that to Indy Atlantic Elementary families. I was out there this morning picking up an entire SUV full of supplies that they donated, and it was really, really thoughtful, nice hygiene supplies of the body scrubbers with ducks on them and all kinds of really, really thoughtful things. And so, shout out to those families that are going to support our homeless students, and if anybody else wants to donate, I think the drive is running for another week, and you can drop stuff off in the front lobby. And last but not least, to my two fellow school board members. It's not going to be the same. I only know this school board, and so, you know, I'm a little apprehensive about getting new school board members, but Mr. Ziegler, you have been kind to me since my very first day on the school board, and you have immense knowledge, like I said before the meeting, that you have shared with the board and helped us avoid some pitfalls that we wouldn't have seen coming because you've been around the block and experienced them, and I appreciate it greatly. And Mr. Craig, your leadership skills are second to none. So, we have been very blessed as a board to have you leading us this last year, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Deskovic. Mr. Ziegler?
I have a few items. The first shout out is going to be for our CFO, Penny Zurcher. And the reason I'm giving her a shout out is because there was a whistleblower report that unfortunately tuck her integrity into question, and that was terrible. As you know, I've defended employees who were wrongfully accused of anything over the years. And I want to tell people that she handled everything to do with that situation correctly, and it's unfortunate the process didn't go through properly. What I do want to commend her about too, though, is it is awesome to see leadership, managers of people advocate for the people in their department. That's a sign of a great leader, and I encourage all of our managers, our supervisor, or cabinet to always advocate for their employees and leave it to the superintendent of the board to determine whether something can be done or not. So, thank you very much, Ms. Zurcher, for advocating for your employee. It was the right thing to do from their perspective. I'm sorry that it ended up the way it did, but you're a great leader, and we're grateful to have you here. Thank you. Would like to reach out and thank the gentlemen, Glenn Outlaw and Paul Zima, from Tied Together for continuing to enter our schools on a more frequent basis to help gentlemen learn about handshakes and tying ties and respect, and I will be a very instrumental part of that going forward. So, I will still be in and out of the schools supporting our students. And my last shout out is actually to the board, and this is going to be a departing shout out for me, is I am very honored and humbled to have served with the four of you. It's been an amazing experience. Anybody who pays close enough attention will know that there's just not a more professional body, I would say, anywhere, especially in the county, people that we can have differences of opinion, and afterwards we get along fantab, it's just amazing. I'll say this in public, I love you guys. You guys are awesome. You guys do great things for the district. John and Misty, I owe you the deepest gratitude for your support of helping us get the healthcare clinics to fruition. That was a major goal for our employees. It helps them immensely. So, thank you very much. And John, I know you're partnering with me. Your leadership of chair has been, as Tina said, has just been, has been second to none. Chair is a very difficult place to be. I'm not sure I would ever want to do it if I was sticking around, but John, you did it flawlessly, and thank you for that. And Matt and Tina, looking forward to good things from you all in the future, if there's anything I could do for you or Misty going forward. Thank you. You guys have just been amazing. Thank God we have Dr. Mullins to keep a steady steer as captain of the ship, so I'm confident things are going to be solid going forward, but I am absolutely been very honored to work with you guys. Couldn't have asked for better board members or better elected officials to be associated with. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Andy. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I also wanted to express appreciation to Commissioner Wayne Justice for the tour of the port. Exciting growth going on in our community, providing both economic growth for our community as well as jobs. We had the opportunity to see a sneak preview of the location of the potential Brevard Zoo Aquarium site, and it was kind of neat to see that before, as we were on the tour, and then coincidentally, I met with Keith Winston just yesterday, I believe, and got to spend some quality time with him, and really, he shared the vision of the aquarium, and just very exciting to see what that could look like for our community and his interest to connect with K-12 and see what elements of education we'd be interested in having as a part of that vision as well. I also attended the security specialist graduation last week, and it was a real impressive demonstration of expertise and qualifications in the men and women that is serving our community in that role. I want to do a special shout out of appreciation to Major Walters, Lieutenant Neal, as well as Dr. Thede, Deputy Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer. They really oversaw the process, ensured that our specialists had a quality training experience, not only in the technical areas but also in the Brevard Public Schools orientation and onboarding. So, they understood the schools that they were going to serve, they met the principals ahead of time just to ensure a very seamless experience. I wasn't able to attend this event, but I want to showcase it anyway. Last Thursday evening, the Cocoa community came together and recognized, celebrated, and dedicated the Cocoa High Stadium to a longtime community and Brevard Public Schools leader, Mr. Richard Dick Blake. The stadium was dedicated to Dick Blake. I had the privilege of serving as principal in the Cocoa community for several years, and then and today, I rarely go very far that I don't meet an individual who wasn't mentored by Mr. Blake during his years as an educator. I was able to then, Friday evening, be at the Cocoa High football game, and we do have some great athletic opportunities. It was a tense game. It came down to the wire. It was a three-point game, but it was very exciting to be there with the Cocoa Tigers. Met with, yesterday, three of our education leaders as well, Mr. Calucci, Mr. Shifrin, and Ms. Barney of our unions and BASSA. And just, I just have to express my appreciation for a very productive, positive conversation coming together around what collaboration, professional dialogue, the common interest of our school system, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, ultimately to do everything we can to serve our students with excellence. So, thank you to Mr. Calucci, Ms. Barney, and Mr. Shifrin for your spirit of collaboration. And then I would also like to take a moment and express my appreciation to Mr. Ziegler, Mr. Craig. Mr. Ziegler, known you for many years, and you formerly as area superintendent, and you model and live to continuous improvement for our schools, for our employees, for us as an organization. Thank you for leading us to be better today. Mr. Craig, thank you for bringing a commitment to efficiency, to effectiveness, challenging us and pushing us to continually seek high return on investment, to look at benefit-cost analysis as a way of our business to ensure that we are as productive as we possibly can as an organization. Appreciate the way you have challenged us, and you have also made us better. Thank you for your leadership, and I certainly would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to, again, thank you for your tremendous support and your confidence in me to serve as the superintendent of Brevard Public Schools. I will continue to work hard to live up to your confidence in me. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Well, I get to go last, and I will make it short because everybody's already touched on all the good stuff, although I do, I just want to talk on the school specialists as well, because I don't think people quite understand the impact, long range, that this is making in our schools. This is a total change in the way we're doing business and a proactive approach to security, and under the leadership of then Dr. Mullins as Chief Operating Officer, and now Dr. Thede, and then Major Walters, and our own Sheriff, Sheriff Ivey, and his team, that came up with the training agenda and how we were going to get to utilize the state training money and the funding that came along with some of the Parkland legislation. This changes the way we do security in this district. It's not the same way, and it's a proactive approach. It's something that we probably didn't think of until February 14th, but now it's necessary. And I just want to thank all of you, the board and the entire cabinet, for getting behind it, understanding what we were trying to do, and then seeing it through to fruition, and it's awesome to see those folks, the quality and the caliber of folks that applied, and then were able to finish the training, and are now on the front lines looking out for my kids and our kids in general. I do have to highlight the fact that my wife, Carol, is here, you know, for the first time, I think, since I got sworn in, which was like four years ago, so kind of cool. But thank you very much for not only coming tonight but for supporting me and for making sure that I got to the places I needed to go on time and that my suit was somewhere in the closet. So, anyway, no, but thank you very much because I couldn't have done it without having that support and knowing what the calendar was supposed to look like and all that thing. And along that, with that are my kids. My kids, you know, they suffered because I wasn't home a lot, especially on Tuesdays, but I do appreciate both Danny and Gillian and their support and their questions about the process and about how this whole political thing works and how the school board operates and what impact it has on them as kids in the classroom. And so, to me, it was a learning process for both of us, and it's been some great discussion with them. Pam Escobar, we could not do our job without you. I can, I'm sure I speak for Andy as well, but thank you for your dedication and for making sure that we are always on task and that we know where we're supposed to be, the exception of today when Andy was late, but that's okay. And, but honestly, Pam, you keep the, you are the glue that keeps us all together. We have five very separate personalities and calendars, and without you, we would probably not end up in the same room at the same time. So, thank you very much for all you do behind the scenes and in front of the scene, like right now. Most of all, though, and in fact, we were talking about it back in the room here before we left, is the folks in the back row, the cabinet, that I have become both professionally associated- associated with, but in many ways friends with. And that's okay. We still disagree on things, but we have great dialogue, and I learn an incredible amount from each and every one of you. So, for each of the cabinet members that are here tonight and the ones that aren't, I just want to thank you for, my wife always calls it in her company, "The Tone at the Top." You all set the tone at the top. It's the only way that we can make sure that everybody's got the same idea of what we're supposed to do and the direction that we're going to go in, and then it's going to be positive and always looking forward, learning from mistakes, but acknowledging our failures and acknowledging when we might make a mistake along the way and being transparent in that regard, so that we make sure that we have an efficient model and that we are always concerned about the student in the classroom, number one. And so, each of you, I know, has that passion and has that desire. So, thank you for not only allowing me to serve you and the board, but for you serving my children who continue to learn in your environment. So, thank you very much for all the things. The faces up here will continue to change, but you all have that tone and you've got that culture going, and I thank you. And I just ask that the next board members, if they're watching, whoever they may be, can come in with that same mindset, that we work as a team, that you serve others, that there's no agendas, and that you are always remembering that the excellence in the classroom is the number one thing. All the principals and teachers, of course, throughout the district that I've made friends with, it is awesome to see so many that continue to elevate. Tonight, we're seeing Dr. Smith and Mike Alba move up out of their positions into positions of leadership here at the district. You know, I can look around in the room, obviously in the back row, Molly Vega, awesome principals that have moved into the leadership positions here in the district. And the ability for us to build that capacity inside the organization is probably what I'm most happy about so far over the last few years. Seeing Dr. Mullins elevate himself to superintendent because he was the right person, and that is awesome. So, Dr. Mullins, I know you're going to continue to do awesome things in this district, continue to keep Brevard at the top of the state of Florida in all regards, even in sports, Matt. And I thank you very much. John?
Yes. Pam, no issue. I think my, being late because my calendar was off was a technical glitch, so it's, John doesn't put that on you. That's technical. And John, you put me on the spot. I forgot to thank my wife and daughter, who are here also, for all their support over the years and for coming here to endure one last meeting. Thank you for putting up with me for 10 years of school board life.
Fantastic. All right. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, on this evening's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, two recognitions, one presentation, 23 consent items, and two action items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released at the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations and item F29 on award of ITN 18-N-085-WH, Facility Assessment and Facility Asset Management Software received revisions. A presentation on healthy school district has been removed. Item F17 on termination of instructional employee and recognition item on Team Voltage 386 and STEM program support have been added, as well as a board discussion point on review.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Mr. Craig, there are seven persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Well, first, I'd like to ask that you all join me in wishing Ms. Doreen Zimmerman all of the best on her upcoming retirement. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman, for your dedication to students, to the community, to the district, and for your leadership that has led Freedom Seven to be the number one elementary school in the state. Congratulations.
Well, I'd like to say that it has been a privilege and honor and pleasure to be the principal of Freedom Seven Elementary for 18 years. I had the privilege to open one of the first Millennium Schools of Choice in Brevard in 2000, and it's been just a great ride. I have, I never would have, it reminds me of that book, Oh, The Places You'll Go, and I would have never thought that we would have celebrated such success, not only with the implementation and authorization of the International Back Glory Primary Years Program, but with two national Blue Ribbons awarded by the United States government and being number one in the state of Florida. It's a nice place to leave on top. And I thank so much, so many people that are here and not here, that contributed to the success by supporting us, especially my wonderful faculty and staff, who have been phenomenal, and then my parent, our parent organization, who has been the backbone of Freedom Seven, supporting all of our needs. I am looking forward to retirement. You know, they say, "You'll know when it's time to retire," and you will especially know that if you are in drop. So, I am looking forward to spending time with our three grandchildren. My husband's been retired for four years, and he's been itching for me to retire, so we're looking forward to becoming snowbirds. And I am looking forward to seeing the great things that Kathy, who's a colleague and a friend, Kathy Lott, is going to do with Freedom Seven. I believe that she's going to continue in that success. Makes me feel good to give the school, you don't give it to you, but you know what I mean, to pass it along to you. So, with that being said, I hope I see some of you out there around town, and thank you for letting me serve. Again, I've been blessed, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Next, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Mike Alba, who actually, little-known fact, we were high school math teacher colleagues together many years ago. Many years ago, we exchanged lesson plans, teaching common courses. On his reclassification and transfer from the position of principal at Vera High School to the position of Director of Professional Learning and Development, congratulations, Mike.
Well, thank you, Dr. Mullins and members of the board, and I still liked your lesson plans. They were phenomenal. They helped me my first year teaching pre-calc, so I definitely appreciate your help with that, Dr. Mullins. Doesn't seem like that was that long ago. It can't be that long ago.
It was.
I have, thank you for entrusting me with this new position, so thank you so much for your trust in me. I have with me tonight Melissa, my wife. I just want to thank her for her support over the last 23 years and for the sacrifices that she has had to make, so that I could be at my various schools and supporting them and their needs and their community. And I have Ms. Robinson here as my assistant principal, here for the last three years at Cocoa Beach. She is my right-hand person. She's phenomenal in her job and what she does to support our teachers and our students and our parents, so I appreciate her support. I don't know what I would have done without you the last couple of years in my new role at Vera High School. In the back, I would like to thank Ms. Klein, Mr. Novelli, Dr. Sullivan, just for all your support that you've given me over the past few years. I always knew that each of you were in my corner, whether good things were happening or I just royally screwed up. Your commitment to me never wavered, and I will always remember that, and I appreciate your support over the years. And I just look forward to this new position, look forward to working with our current leadership in schools and our aspiring leaders in schools that are teachers, and hopefully to be able to recruit phenomenal teachers here to our district and the teachers that have come here, that we can find ways to make sure that they do stay when they come to Brevard County, and we can make sure we're meeting their needs. So, look forward to working with the new team. Thank you so much.
I also want to welcome and congratulate Mr. Neal Appel and congratulate, I'm on his appointment, to the position of Director of Purchasing and Warehouse, and no one is more happy than Dr. Thetty.
Thank you, Superintendent. Members of the board, staff, and guests, thank you for the opportunity to work with Brevard Schools. I look forward to starting next month.
Now, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Wendy Smith for her reclassification and transfer from the position of principal at Cambridge Elementary School to the position of Director of Elementary Leading and Learning.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, members of the board, Mrs. Klein, and the interview committee. I thank you for your trust in me as I take on this new endeavor. As I look over here, I have three formal mentors, DJ Cornell, Dr. Carol Mella, and Tara Harris, who have worked alongside me, above me, below me, and helped me in any way that they can. I appreciate their help. I have lots of informal mentors, teachers, students, and staff, who have made me who I am. My assistant principal, Dr. Spear, is here, and she's going to continue the charge of providing an excellent education for the students at Cambridge Elementary. Mr. Dillon, who worked underneath me at Cambridge and now is an assistant principal at Longleaf, so we're proud of him for that. Lastly, my mom, Kay Stewart, who is retired Brevard County Public School teacher, and my late father, Kirk Stewart, who is also a retired Brevard County Public School teacher. They were my foundation and a big part of who I am today. My husband, David, and our two children who are in college, thank you for being with me during the days, the nights, the weekends, and all those times where you said, "Are you finished yet?" So, I appreciate you, love you to death, and I cannot wait to start this new endeavor.
And now, I'd like to welcome Kathy Lott, who will be transferring from the position of principal at Imperial Estates to the principal of Freedom Seven Elementary School. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Thank you, members of the board, Ms. Steve Alfred. I've been working with her several years. I am really excited about this opportunity to get to follow not only a mentor of mine, but a friend of mine, and carry on what she does at Freedom Seven and support that IB program. I'd like to thank all the principals from BPS that have brought me up as a leader, starting with Patty Martin, Michael Cornow, Marilyn Sylvester, and I just couldn't have done without them, and not to mention my directors. DJ Cornell has been with me, and you know, all of the directors support us, and Mrs. Klein as well, so thank you. I do have my husband of 23 years, Dennis, here. He is my chef and my partner in crime. He's crying. Yes, this is my husband. I love him to death. And my daughter, Delaney, who's with us as well tonight. Jocelyn is away at college up at FSU. Go Knowles! But they are always there with me to support me. Delaney keeps me on my toes with her sports and humor, and I just couldn't do it without the support of my family. One last, I would like to thank all the faculties. Imperial Estates family, I'm going to miss them greatly. They've been a great support. I still am in a lot of contact with my Longleaf and my Stevenson family. So, Brevard, BPS Schools really pulls together. I think we stick together no matter where we are, and it's a great place to be, so thank you.
That moves us into our recognitions. Item B8 is to offer the mentors of Team Voltage 386 an opportunity to recognize an individual who has provided many years of support of their robotics program, as well as other STEM initiatives. Daniel Kemp, one of the Team Voltage 386 mentors, will provide comments and make introductions.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Daniel Kemp, and I am a mentor on Team Voltage 386. I was also a student on the team and a student at Melbourne High School. We are a first robotics team based out of Melbourne High School, who also gladly accepts any students that do not have a team at their own school. Currently, we have lots of West Shore students and lots of homeschoolers. First Robotics is a global organization that brings engineers and professionals together with students to promote STEM education and encourage students to pursue engineering and technical career tracks. Our main challenge for the year is to design, test, fabricate a 140-pound robot to compete in serious competitions. We've had great success at this in the county. In our county, we have eight First Robotics competition teams, which is high school level, 16 First Technical Challenge teams, which is eighth grade or seventh and eighth grade and high school as well, 30 First Lego League teams, which is fourth through eighth grade, and then 18 First Lego League junior teams, which is K through 3, totaling 72 First teams in the county. That's over 550 students each year impacted by these programs. Now, I can't talk for the First Tech Challenge teams or the First Lego League teams, but from the robotics level, we have eight teams in our county, 30 wins in 20 years at regional competitions, and 126 technical awards in those 20 years as well, at the global level also. But it's more than just robots. We find that our organization promotes and develops skills such as teamwork, leadership, civility, critical thinking, among many others. 10 years ago, former Superintendent Dr. Potry and members of that board saw the immense value of these types of programs and encouraged each school in Brevard County to have some form of First program. Himself and that board has been providing funding and facilities, equipment, educators throughout those years. Team Voltage is celebrating their 20th anniversary this year as a team, and without this support, it would not be possible. We would like to recognize one individual that has gone above and beyond to support these programs all across the county. Andy, you ensured that Dr. De Potry's legacy lived on. I lost the card. Anyways, I'm going to wing it now. How about that? So, you've done many things in the 10 years that you've helped our team. You've attended all of the kickoffs that we hold in January, where we get to find our game, and you've spoken with our students about what they're doing and how important it is and how successful they can be. You've gone to all of the teams, beginning, during, and after the build season, to make sure that we're doing well and if there's anything that we need to succeed. You've also gone to our competitions, both in Orlando, South Florida, and at the global level at championships, to support your teams on behalf of Brevard County Public Schools. You've been a friend, a mentor, and an immense help, and we thank you. Thank you.
Do you want a photo?
There was going to be a picture.
Want a photo?
I'm going to go get a picture.
Do you want a photo?
If they want.
Photo op.
Thank you, Team Voltage. Dr. Mullins, will you please tell us about our next recognition?
Item B9 is the continuum of transition services for students with disabilities. Christine Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, will make the introductions.
Good evening. As our high school seniors have begun counting down the days toward graduation, we wanted to take just a minute of our time this evening to talk to our community about all of the post-secondary transition opportunities our students with disabilities have, to thank our community partners that make it all possible, and to hear from one of those community partners this evening. It's going to be a very brief presentation, so if anybody has any questions or if the community has any questions, we'd love to talk more about it. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Director of ESE Programs, Donna Baberski, and our amazing Transition Resource Teacher, Terry Matson.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight some of our programs for our students with disabilities. Over the last several years, I have a great team who has built community partnerships to extend what we do for students with disabilities in the community and encourage post-school positive outcomes. Our Our transition programs are the bridge between high school and adulthood, and we have comprehensive services. When you look at the comprehensive continuum, we start with high school, where we encourage self-determination, self-advocacy, community-based activities, which leads into our BLAST program now, which is an eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old transition program that looks at our domains of transition and helps kids with work readiness skills. Students can then transition into EMPLOY, which is a partnership with the city of Palm Bay or Project Search, which we partnership with Health First to have on-the-job experience. Within all of those programs, we also have LEAP trainers or job coaches that are right there beside the students with that community partner, with the agency, like Publix, like Roses, and like our own Brevard Public Schools, with hopefully for career and college outcomes. Another opportunity we have for transition services that isn't highlighted on the PowerPoint is a long-term partnership with Brevard Achievement Center, who also sends staff into our Learning Strategies class to work on interview skills, resume-writing skills, and everything that would go into a young person trying to get a job and being ready for that opportunity afterwards. I'm gonna now turn it over to Terry Matson, our amazing resource teacher for transition, who will highlight one of our students' successes and then introduce our VR contact for this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to highlight such special programs that BPS offers. This is just one recent success story of our young adult in the Titusville BLAST area. She is a graduate of Brevard Public Schools, went on into the transition program of BLAST, entered the LEAP program where she participated in extensive job employment skills training through the LEAP program at the Publix in Titusville and Garden Street. After over four hundred hours of volunteer hours on the non-paid internship, it was her last day before aging out, the day before she turned twenty-two. That day, she was offered a job at Publix on the spot by one of the managers. So again, that's just one of our many success stories in the continuum that our students have the opportunity to participate in. All of these programs wouldn't be available without the collaboration and participation with our contact at Vocational Rehabilitation. They support our programs and our students in lifelong-term outcomes that provide employment opportunities. About two years ago, VR rolled out a program originally labeled the STAR Program. Since then, it's become the Pre-Employment Transition Service Program. This provides training programs and opportunities for our students with disabilities after school, weekend, and specifically during the summer hours. The past two years, we've had great success placing our students in fulfilling and meaningful job opportunities. It is with great success that Brevard leads the state with close to five hundred referrals to date. That leads me into introducing to you a representative from Vocational Rehabilitation. That is Mr. Alex Bologna. He is very passionate about what he does and the work he does with VR. He is a community liaison and the driving force of Brevard's pre-ETS referral services. So to date, like I say, Brevard has experienced close to five hundred referrals, so with great pleasure, I introduce to you Mr. Alex Bologna.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight, I'm representing the Florida Department of Education, specifically the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. On behalf of the Department of Education's Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, we'd like to thank the School Board of Brevard County for your partnership and commitment to students with disabilities. Through your support, we've communicated our services to students with IEPs and 504s at five district high schools, and with over two hundred referrals were made following those presentations. Students had the opportunity to participate in work experiences throughout the summer as well as a select number of other services that can assist them with preparing for the future of work. Thirty-five students opted to participate in a trades work experience program with employers from the Home Builders and Contractors Association of Brevard County and Brevard County Public Schools Transportation Services and Printing Services. The outcomes were tremendous. All the employers who participated said they'll be participating again. More employers have asked to be added. The program is being lauded as a promising practice for urgent talent supply shortages and skills gap in the workforce. Perhaps one of the most encouraging outcomes was that the work experiences had one of the students actually enter into a formal apprenticeship with one of the employers where he worked. We'd also like to acknowledge District Four School Board Member Matt Susan for his contribution to this partnership. His unwavering commitment and enthusiasm were contagious and as a substantial driving force in the successful completion of this project. It's with our pleasure and honor to present the School Board of Brevard County and School Board Member Matt Susan with the Department of Education's Public Service Award.
Let's all get a picture. Yeah, all get a... Let's go, we're all getting a picture. No, it's the board.
Matt, you go.
No, I'm not. Y'all are coming. No! Is it for the board, right? Yeah, the board.
I don't want a picture next to you. You make me look short.
Come on! Come on! I didn't know you guys were sitting in the seats.
You deserve it, Matt. Well, man. Well, it's good. We're has-beens, we're done.
This thing's phenomenal. They're absolutely the most amazing program you've ever seen. Alex, hang on a second. I just have a couple of questions for you. Just to reiterate, are we the largest referral and employment-based county in the state of Florida?
Yes, you have four hundred and fifty student referrals into WEOWA, the WEOWA Pre-Transition Employment Service. Yes, so you guys take the scoreboard on that one.
And recently, didn't I hear that not only did the city of Palm Bay, the city of Titusville, the city of West Melbourne, the city of Cocoa Beach, and a host of other cities just signed onto the project?
Yes, yeah, we have thousands of open positions. We have tens of millions of dollars waiting to spend on the internship.
No, 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 literally millions of dollars to spend on this program and thousands of opportunities for our youth to go to work in them, and all they have to do is fill out a form to go to work, correct?
Yeah.
If they have a 504 and IEP.
504 and IEP, it could be twenty to forty percent of the entire population of the schools.
So that means that if they fill this out and they go to work, that their workers' comp, everything's paid for, they can go to work for an employer, and there's zero risk and zero cost to an employer for our kids who have a 504 and IEP to go to work for them?
Right, we can pay them market wage. So we're paying them eleven dollars an hour. We can pay them fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, doesn't matter what it is. We're actually, had to hand back seventeen million dollars last year because we didn't have enough students to spend the internship money on. So we'd really like to be doing that with you guys, so we hope to be doubling that or sharpening that here in Brevard County to show everybody else what this really can do. So thank you, guys. You guys have done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Just one thing, if anybody has any questions, there are some restrictions and some things that negate other things with the application process, and we don't want to cheat anybody out of an opportunity. So just make sure if you have any questions or concerns, if you go to Terry Matson, she can make sure that we give every student every opportunity possible within the rules and what we have to adhere to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the presentations. Dr. Mullins.
Item D...excuse me. Item D10 is a check presentation by Health First. Introducing our presenters is Ms. Molly Vega, Director of Secondary Leading and Learning, Acceleration and Enrichment.
Hi. Tonight, Brevard Public Schools is receiving a grant from Health First for physical education in six of our middle schools. Assisting with the check presentation is Rachel Winston, our K-12 Resource Teacher for Health and Physical Education.
Thank you, Ms. Vega, Dr. Mullins, Mr. Craig and members of the board. My name is Rachel Winston, and it is my honor as the Resource Teacher for Health and Physical Education to announce that we are the recipients of a grant from Health First to enhance physical education programs at six of our middle schools. Health First's mission of helping create a healthier community for Brevard County supports our school district's physical education mission, which is to educate all students to attain lifelong personal wellness and exceptional health. This project is helping to enhance the health, wellness and fitness of middle school students by providing funding for new and unique fitness equipment as well as teacher professional development. The new equipment will allow teachers to diversify the types of activities offered as well as enhance their repertoire of content. We are also able to provide greater professional development by way of conference attendance for a number of teachers who will bring their learning back and share with teachers from across the district. Teachers are already collaborating and planning activities that specifically address student goals for their personal fitness. Teachers are shifting the responsibility of maintaining and improving fitness to the students so that they can be the stewards of their own health. On behalf of the following schools, Hoover Middle School, Johnson Middle School, Kennedy Middle School, Central Middle School, Cocoa High, and West Shore Junior Senior, I want to thank Health First for their generosity in providing this grant to support and enhance our physical education programs. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matthew Gerald, Senior Vice President of Consumer and Retail Services for Health First. Mr. Gerald would like to deliver a brief message and then present the check. And we do have representatives from the majority of our schools here in the audience who will be called up for a photo op at the end.
Good evening. On behalf of the nine thousand Health First associates, we are proud to continue our support to improve the wellness and health of our community, not just because it is our mission, not just because the children of our associates go to these schools, but because these are our future doctors, nurses, health plan representatives, and even personal trainers. Because these students of today are gonna be the Health First associates of tomorrow, we are proud to continue this support and thank you and every educator here who have dedicated their lives to making them achieve excellence. Thank you.
Dr. Mullins and Mr. Craig, if you would come for a picture. And all of our teachers and students that are here, Hoover Middle School, West Shore Junior Senior, Central Middle School, Kennedy Middle School, Johnson Middle School, all of our representatives, our teachers, our administrators and our students.
Awesome. Best part of the night. All right, well, actually now is too, because we are now at public comments and we have less than ten speakers, so I will just go on to our policy reminders that each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock, handy-dandy, high-speed clock, in front of me to help keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual leave the meeting. We will encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. We have five speakers signed up this evening, and I will call your names first three up. First is Bonnie French, followed by Anthony Calucci, and then Vanessa Skipper. For speaking, please state your name, organization you represent, and the topic you will be discussing.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie French. I'm an approved provider with the International Dyslexia Association, and October was Dyslexia Awareness Month. I've asked every parent who brings their child into my tutoring business if they got anything from Brevard Public Schools in regards to dyslexia awareness, and for the most part, the answer was no. I have been a tutor in Brevard County for ten years. Last five, I've worked full-time with over forty students a week. I've worked six days a week out of my little office in order to change lives, and the thing that I know, I'm leaving, I'm moving back to Canada, and I heard one of the members up here saying, you know, the thing that will, the faces will change. Well, yes, they will, but the thing that I know that will stay the same is that every year in Brevard County, we retain about six hundred children in kindergarten alone. And if you add the retention rate for first grade into that, it comes out to about twenty percent, which oddly enough is the statistic for dyslexia in the general population. The statistic is one in five in the general population is dyslexic. So counting the members and the folks that are sitting up in the dais there, at least one of you has dyslexia. You either struggled to tie your shoes when you were young, you struggled to memorize your times tables, you struggled to memorize those sight words. Some of you might have been retained in school. Many of the teachers that I've tutored their children also have dyslexia, but we really don't talk about that. It's almost like a dirty word, and even though the federal government has given us permission to talk about dyslexia, we very rarely address it. I have reached out numerous times to various people in the county, and most of the time it's crickets. So here's what I know. Things won't change for the next six hundred children that we're going to retain in kindergarten this year, and the cost alone in dollars is about five and a half million dollars. But that doesn't include the cost for those children. We tell them we're going to give them the gift of time when we retain them, but it's really an ugly gift, because we put them back into kindergarten and we teach them with the same methods that failed them the first time around. And if you know what I'm talking about, that's the definition of insanity, doing the same things over again and over and over and expecting different results. I use explicit phonics. I have trained teachers in the county, many of them have paid me from their own pocket. So you'll find that here and there, you'll have teachers that are really amazing teachers, and lots of times, they're quietly using phonics in their classroom. Balanced literacy is what we're using to teach children to read. They bring home those little sight words, memorize, look at the picture in their book and guess, and it is ineffective for the bottom twenty percent. But for many of our children in this school, this school district, that bottom twenty percent has just become the cost of doing business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. French. I do respectfully disagree with some of the things you said, and if you'd like to speak with Ms. Moore in the back, you're more than welcome to see exactly what we're continuing to do, as I know we have worked with your group and others with dyslexia quite a bit. And so I know that the team back there is extremely committed to that and has remained so and will continue to do so, and I'm very happy with that they are doing that. Next is Anthony Calucci, followed by Vanessa Skipper and Kayla Spellman.
Anthony Calucci, President of Brevard Federation of Teachers. I would take time to thank John and Andy, but I know what sticklers they are with that time clock. One of my highlights of being a BFT officer was when I got to be the timekeeper at one of our school board candidate forums and kept dinging Andy after two minutes. It was about the best thing. But thank you for your service. I understand that being a public servant can be a thankless job sometimes. Orange County teachers are getting a $2,075 raise and a $500 bonus. The Volusia County School Board is offering its teachers a two and a half percent raise as well as a two and a half percent raise for each of the next two years. Osceola County teachers are getting a $1,200 raise, and BPS is offering us a $575 raise and a $440 bonus. Your offer fails to meet your moral and statutory obligation to provide competitive raises. However, in these early stages of negotiations, I'm hopeful that you will work to ensure every available cent is on the table for raises. You must attract and retain teachers with competitive pay. Mr. Craig, you asked me to find money in the budget, and I did. Now I'm asking you to have the courage to use that money for... Title I, teachers are filling in, or class sizes are large. It was an outrage, to say the least, for the district CFO to say, "That's not saving any money." Do you believe that? I'm responsible for a fairly sized budget at BFT, and I know if I didn't pay my four employees, I would be saving quite a bit of money. The truth is that this has saved over $1 million for the district so far, and each day it's adding 20,000 more dollars of savings. But I've actually found a lot more money than that. I want you to look at your own budget proposal, which I will give you in a second. Where it says bonus, you'll notice that it says there are 4,883 teachers in Brevard County. So the million-dollar question, no pun intended, is why is the district budgeting for 5,135 teachers? So let's figure this out. We have 4,883 teachers plus 65 vacancies. That gives us 4,948 teachers. Now I see there are 67 adult ed teachers budgeted that aren't in the BFT unit. Let's not worry about that, although I don't really think there's that many. So where does that leave us? The district has budgeted for 120 more teachers than it actually has. 100 more teachers on paper than in reality. That means they've over-budgeted for nearly $7 million that could be used to retain and pay real teachers. Additionally, I wonder if those social workers and literacy coaches that you put aside grant funding for last year is being pulled out of that instructional salary pot as well. That would make an additional 30 or 40 positions.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci.
Come on, I was like, I talked nicely about you for like 30 seconds.
I just gave you another 30 seconds.
30 seconds. One last thing. So we know we cut 82 positions. We know that there's twice as many vacancies this year. How can we have more teachers this year than last year? Look at when we signed the contract, certified the contract, there was 4,939 teachers. Thank you. Thank you for the 30 seconds.
Thank you. Vanessa Skipper, sorry. Kayla Spellman, and Lisa Keys.
I'm a medic. Okay. Um, good evening, members of the board.
It's not you.
Yeah. Can I get the time clock reset?
Yes. Hold on.
So I think it's time to say congratulations, Mr. Ziegler and Mr. Craig, on your, um, back, going back into the, um, the real world. But, um, thank you for your service. We do appreciate, um, thank you for being there when we call, even though we might not always agree. We appreciate the open line of communication. Am I good? Okay.
All right. Thanks, Vanessa. And thank you, Jackie.
All right. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of BFT. John Randolph once said, "Time is at once the most valuable and the most perishable of all our possessions." If there is one thing I hear teachers ask for more than anything, aside from the obvious salary increase that respects them as professionals that they are, is time to do their job. Time to teach, time to plan, time to grade, time to really reflect on their classroom and students so that they can implement lessons in a way that meets the diverse needs of their students. We brought two pieces of language to you that would increase time for teachers to do all of the above, but we're told by the district's bargaining team that you rejected both of those. The first piece of language that was rejected talked about early release days. In some months, there are four early release Fridays, in others, there are three. We requested that in the months that include four early release days, um, those days could be used for early release. On the months that only included three days for early release, we asked that all three of those days be used for teachers to plan in their classroom. Teachers felt that their time was better served, obviously, in their classroom on those days. The district said that while we might not think that the professional development time was valuable, the board did. Well, I'd like the district or the board to tell that to the teachers that sat through a United Way presentation and a sales pitch from Sam's Club during an early release professional development session. In addition, early release days were instituted to give teachers more time to do their jobs, but yet it seems like they are used as more time to give teachers more to do. The next piece of language that was rejected asked that teachers have three of their weekly planning times designated as no meeting zones for uninterrupted planning time. Currently, teachers have two. I asked for some quotes from teachers, and here's a sampling. Stop the extra meetings. We meet just to meet. A lot of the meetings could be covered in emails, yet we have to meet to hear people read from a PowerPoint. In order for me to better do my job, eliminate all the extra meetings such as PLC, cohort, faculty, and PD. Do we really need this many? I'm supposed to run a library only during scheduled classes when I'm teaching. Any available time that should be used to keep the library running smoothly, to process books, order materials, keep a collection of 11,000 books current, lesson plan, work with technology, collaborate with teachers, grant writing, fundraise, schedule author and illustrator visits, encourage the entire school population that reading is cool, has been taken, and I have become an interventionist. All of this extra is done in my own time, and yet I'm not a real teacher despite being evaluated as one. In order to give me time to plan lessons, stop nonsense data reports that can be found on Unify, or Performance Matters, or meetings that could be emails. The greatest thing in life is efficiency. If you amount to anything in the world, your time is valuable, your energy precious. They are your success capital, and you cannot afford to heedlessly throw them away or trifle with them. So we're asking that you reconsider those time language pieces. They're important, and teachers would use them valuably rather than having their time perish in wasteful meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Kayla Spellman and Lisa Keys.
Beatty Johnny on Spock. I'm gonna stand back here. I'm Kayla Spellman. I'm a parent of children in the Brevard School System. I have four kids. So it was like a jailbreak to get here tonight, but I really wanted to be here to thank you for supporting schools for the Viera community. This is something that I'm very excited about, I'm very passionate about. It's something that we need. It's an idea that time came a long time ago, and so the community is just really ready for it, and I'm really excited that this is something that's actually a reality. I know that you're balancing a lot of financial constraints and competing priorities, and we have 10 places to put every dollar and every student that we have. But I'm glad this is something that the board values, that the board has promoted, and that the board supports, and I really appreciate all of the staff that worked so hard to support the board's efforts to make this a possibility, and I just wanted to thank you.
Kayla, thanks for your time on the Independent Sales Tax Review Committee over the last, what was it, four or five years that you've been on there? Thank you for all the time that you put in for that, too. Lisa Keys.
Yep. Hello. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm here to talk to you about the central elementary and middle schools and why that decision is so important. I just found out while sitting over there, you know, writing my little notes down on what to say, that the Florida Today has posted that you all, in your workshop this afternoon, already approved, signed off on, I believe is what they said, the concept of the new elementary and middle school. So a lot of what I've got written was written before that great news, but I'm gonna read it to you anyway. So you're lucky. When, my family lived in Illinois about a year ago. Happy, had a great house, great schools. We lived there 20 years. Couldn't imagine moving anywhere. And then my son-in-law said, "Hey, this company called Northrop just offered me this great job. It's in Florida." That seemed really exotic to us. We knew you had beaches and palm trees. But schools? We weren't sure. My daughter, who did a lot of research in grad school, became a research fiend, and she poured over data. She looked at everything, and she was like, "Hey, this fantastic Brevard schools are wonderful." We were moving to Florida. We were moving, and I say we because I follow the grandchildren. They're really cute, in case you remember. But it was scary, because, you know, 20 years in one place, you don't want to give that up easily. When we came down here, our goal was to find a house. We were willing to compromise on the kind of house, but our essential rule was it had to have good schools. Absolutely didn't matter. Good schools. We settled on Viera. It was actually pretty and had good schools, so it was a win-win for us, kind of like winning the lottery. We bought a house in Carrington. We spent way more. Wow, were we in sticker shock over house prices down here. But we kind of made it work by saying, "At least the kids won't have to go to private school. We're good. This is fantastic." We moved in, and the first thing our brand-new neighbor said is, "Oh, my gosh, have you heard about Quest?" And we were like, "Yeah, it's a great school. We looked at all the data." She said, "Yeah, but it's really crowded." And that was really scary for someone coming in from out of town. It was, it really rattled us. And you heard about kids eating lunch at 10:00, and not enough computers, and not enough rooms. And I know what you have had to grapple with financially and publicly, it's all over the media. I know that can't be easy, but I want you to know that it matters to us. It matters not just for people in school, but people who buy homes here. It's important that you guys back those ideals that everybody wants. We want kids that can learn, that don't have to eat lunch at 10 o'clock and be hungry in the afternoon. We want them to have computers and library books and enough space to learn. And I want to thank you for making the hard decision. I'm about to go over. But my dad said, can't say, I can't say about my dad. He told me that the right decisions are often not the easy ones. And I want to thank you for making what was undoubtedly a really hard decision. It means a lot to the people that trust you to guide our little people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys, and thank you to all our speakers. The board wishes to thank each of you and your willingness to speak to the board. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 23 agenda items under this category, one with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item?
Okay, I'd like to pull F-27, John.
Mr. Susan is requested to pull F-27. Is there anybody else that would like to pull anything? Hearing none, Pam, we please pull item F-27 for discussion. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of item F-27 that was pulled for discussion.
Move to approve.
Seconded by Ms. Duskovich, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Susan, your motion for discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Sue Han to come up.
Can you ask? Point of order is recognized. Thank you. Mr. Susan has moved to approve F-27. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bell for discussion. Mr. Susan, your discussion.
Yes, I wanted to ask Sue Han to come up and explain the process. Many people understand that we did approve to build the schools, but I wanted Sue to kind of give us an overview of, I wanted to first give her the absolute amazing, yeah, okay. Sue, you're the most popular person tonight. But I wanted you to know that this, building this elementary school is going to be a huge undertaking because of the time constraints, right? And then I wanted them to also just get an overview of the timing of the middle school. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Susan. Sue Han, Assistant Superintendent for Facility Services, and supported by Dave Lindeman in the back, who does a tremendous amount of our legwork and data analysis for us. Couple things. The elementary school is moving up in the schedule because of the fact that our charter school that we thought was going to open in August of 2019 is not going to open, and so it became much more urgent that we move forward with the elementary school in the Viera area. Doing that means that we really need to be started several, you know, weeks ago, and so we brought this to the board in workshop format today and included it in our five-year work program so that we can get started on design very shortly. We have a prototype architect who is now working towards a design proposal that we'll bring to the board November 20th, and then we will be moving forward with design and concurrently going out for RFP or RFQ for construction managers so that we'll be able to link those two up in the spring. The focus of our team right now is really on getting the elementary school going so that we can meet the August 2020 opening. But we're also looking at a middle school. Our projections and our five-year work program show that opening no earlier than August of 2023. But to avoid the, kind of, the rush that we're in on the elementary school, we're looking to move forward with design early, and so we have included some educational impact fees in our five-year work program so that we can get started in the spring. And on the middle school, I would see that as a much more collaborative process with the community and working through what that school is going to look like and where it's going to be located. So we have a lot more discussion to have on the middle school coming up in the future.
And the goal, the goal on that is to design one that's very, state-of-the-art security and all of those, and you said start the design and conversation sometime in the spring of next year.
Spring of next year. So very shortly after we get our ducks in a row for the elementary construction, we'll get started on the design on the middle school. And so, yes, we will need to meet current security standards. We do have constraints on the cost per student station, so we need to meet that fiscal constraint that we have from the state. But we will be looking to use innovation, technology, state-of-the-art security, do the best we can within those constraints.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Yes.
Excellent. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler.
That's an interesting point that she just brought out, is that with our cap, our per-student station cap, and to add in all this extra security, I think this is a golden opportunity for a legislative ask to do away with that cap or to raise that cap because it's going to constrain the security of our schools. I think the conversation's ripe right now, and I think it ought to be a legislative priority for this board.
It's true. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Good point.
Thank you, Sue.
Is there any more discussion? No, Mr., or Dr. Mullins, I'm sorry.
Mr. Craig, if I may, just I want to do a shout-out to Ms. Han, Mr. Dave Lindeman, who worked vigilantly to put together the proposal for the board earlier today. Also, Todd P. is here from the Viera. Sorry, Todd, I can't, I can't get it out, my friend. Fellow men, fellow real men wear pink, but don't contribute to his campaign, contribute to mine. But Todd and the Viera Company have been great and responsive to us in working through this, so wanted to say thank you to Todd as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Just remember it's Sue Han.
No, I keep saying Han. I did it. I did it. I did it, too.
Is there any other discussion? If that'll call a question, please vote.
No, wait, wait, wait. Can I ask Todd to come up if he has any questions? Or anyone wants to make a comment? You want to make a comment, Todd? Please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I will rescind the question.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Mullins. It's an exciting day. I'm very grateful for your approval to move forward with the elementary school and the middle school activities. I also want to thank Mr. Craig and Mr. Ziegler for your service. You're a great asset to this community. We thank you for everything you've done. The Viera Companies had a great relationship with the school board, all the way back to the unveiling of the master plan for the community of Viera in 1989, when we donated the property for this building. Our agreement with the school board provides that as schools are needed through build-out of the community, and we're not even halfway through yet, that we donate those sites, provide the infrastructure, and waive impact fee credits that we would otherwise have a right to. So we have, we have a great relationship going forward as the community continues to grow, and this is a huge step to continue to meet the demands and respond to the needs of the children in our community. So thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Susan.
Thanks a lot, Todd. Now I'm ready. Thank you, and thank you for your partnership. All right, is there any other discussion? That'll call the question? Please vote.
It's a big night for you.
Motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Mr. Craig, there are two items under this category this evening. First is item G-35 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's a big night for you.
It's happening everywhere. Awards, schools.
Motion passes 5-0.
All you've ever dreamed of.
We'll move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Mr. Craig, there are two items under this category this evening. First is item G-35 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Next is item G-36 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Motion passes 5-0. There's no information items at this time. We move on to board member reports. Mr. Ziegler has to add a discussion point on review of the whistleblower and retaliation investigation. Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Being the last opportunity to speak to these, unfortunately, I need to speak about them here. I wanted to point out a few things, some information that I'm aware of that occurred a while back. So on the whistleblower, boiled down to an ambiguous policy being not implemented as we would expect it to be implemented, and a recommendation of clearing up or adjusting that policy. Is that correct, Mrs. Enville? And then assume that's being worked on right now. Okay. I wanted to, I don't know if any of the board members are aware, but I was curious from the, from RSM as to whether or not the statement of ambiguity was their finding or their opinion. And what I told, was told, it was their finding. In other words, that was what they were told by staff as to why policies weren't being followed the way we thought they would be followed. So investigation obviously came out, and that was the result. And I was curious as to, now 10 years, I can tell you that was never my interpretation of how things run. Everything comes before, comes a superintendent recommendation from superintendent to the board. I went confirmed with previous HR director to find out if that was ever the case. So, and it never was. So several, about a year ago, I had concerns about attrition at a particular school. And I don't want to mention the school. You may recall the conversation. I started researching an internal employment chart from the school against our board member agenda. And I found numerous employees that had been working for several months and had not been approved before the board. So I discussed that with Dr. Blackburn. And he told me that, and before that he, that he had discussed this with Mrs. Enville, assuming it was true, that, that maybe we don't need to approve employees. And I found that kind of odd, so I suggested to him that he bring to us statute and/or policy to either support or, and if he thought it needed to be changed, then we, then we change it. Obviously, from this investigation, it's clear that statute, and in my opinion, it's clear policy dictates that all these changes come through the superintendent to the board. So what I want to suggest is that more digging needs to be done because if, in fact, the process is broken, we need to know what exactly is broken and where other, where employees are not being processed through to approval by the board. And I don't know if that has any, any legal implications if we didn't approve them for employment, if that, because there is, in their employment, there is the bonding of a contract. And I believe that it is upon us statutorily to be the ones that authorize and bond that contract. But we need to, I think somebody needs to dig in deeper to figure out what is it that we need to correct, not just what we saw on the surface. Because on this, there were 21 employees, according to the investigation. And it says, based on that, it's obvious that this is the process that was being followed. I don't believe that's the proper process, and I don't know if that's the process for sure that's been followed for past several years, but it needs to be looked at. And the board obviously needs to give direction as to whether they want this looked into further. Again, doesn't affect me going forward, but I think it does affect the processes that are being put in place. Please check what has been done right, what hasn't been done right, and if it needs to be fixed, I recommend they be fixed. And my goal, this is to suggest a deeper dive into analysis of what's come before the board, because I think you're going to find a lot more that hasn't come before the board, because I found it myself very easily. The other thing I want to point out is, I wanted to make a point. If you recall, we had a conversation, I think it was last December at a retreat, where the topic came out about concerns about retaliation for me recording a meeting. And I told you that I was very concerned that that would never happen and that I sought legal advice. And I told you at the time, legal advice said that recording the meeting with permission is not retaliation. Unfortunately, our attorney was very adamant that it was and convinced Dr. Blackburn that it was. We now see from the investigative report that they say it was not. It disappointed me very much at that meeting, that the legal opinion differed from everybody else in the legal world that I have spoke to about what the proper process was to handle that situation. Unfortunately, Mrs. Enville, and I, and this is not personal, but I just have zero confidence in the opinions that are coming forward to this board and the situations that we're in because of some of those opinions. There are numerous items that raise concern to me. And because of that, and I hate to do this at this meeting, but, Mrs. Belford, I wouldn't do this without you being part of the conversation. You weren't at the press meeting, so I delayed till this meeting. Terrible way to end 10 years, but I think it's absolutely necessary to say that I would like to vote of no confidence of Mrs. Enville and make a motion of termination based on poor performance.
There's a motion on the table for what Mr. Ziegler stated. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Susan. Discussion. So, Mr. Ziegler, I think you've had your discussion. Mr. Susan?
I wanted to give him the opportunity to discuss, and that's why I seconded him.
I believe he just discussed.
No, that was, that was the, two issues I want to discuss is a lead-in to numerous items that I want to remind the board about that have happened. And John, to be clear, and you rightfully so asked me a question, a very appropriate question when we were doing the evaluation of Mrs. Enville, because I was very piercing on my evaluation. Your question to me was that you thought that my concern was serious enough, and you asked me, am I considering that maybe we should terminate? And I thought about it, and erring on the side of fairness and the thoughts of the board on the evaluation, I thought maybe I was being a little harsh. However, and so I eased up on my evaluation. However, since then, numerous things have occurred that were not on the table at that point in time, including the results of some reports that we now know the truth about. If you recall, well, if you recall, I want to let you know that during the investigation, I received correspondence from an attorney, from the investigators, and I forwarded that to Mrs. Enville. It would have been nice to know at the time I was sharing this information that she was not going to be acting in a capacity of our attorney for that event, but in a capacity of a witness. We should have been notified of that immediately. Maybe the chair was notified, but the board wasn't. I think it's kind of suspicious, though, that being a witness, because she sits on the dais, why, why a superintendent could have then been called as a witness, our secretary could have been called as a witness at a public meeting, anybody in the audience could have been called as a witness. But that precluded then our attorney from representing us in this situation. And then it wasn't until Mr. Susan asked about having our attorney join us for the interview that we found this out. And so that wasn't an opportunity. But that bothered me that that wasn't disclosed. I want to also let you know that one of the issues that came up during the retaliation was a question about me discussing with Dr. Blackburn policy. Imagine that, board discussing policy with the superintendent. That is our primary job. And the question I had asked to him was whether he was going to be following a particular policy. And he said, no. And I said, well, why not? And he said, well, because he's been advised that it doesn't apply to the board. And that was our harassment policy. I don't see that anywhere in that policy. And I thought it was kind of convenient that it all of a sudden doesn't apply to the board. This board is very clear that it is not above an employee in this district and that we feel inclusive of all policies that refer to employees, as we should. We've been very clear on that. In the report, it asks, it makes a comment that I discussed consequences to those actions. I never did that. Never mentioned that. I just purely spoke about implementing policy. So it's interesting that he had an opinion, advice that it didn't apply to us. I'm sure we know where that came from. We also know, bouncing back to the whistleblower handling, which, by the way, I stayed out of, as you all know, that after three weeks, nothing had been done. Or it says, I won't say nothing had been done. At three weeks, we hadn't had any information returned to us. I then got a call from RSM shocked that our attorney had called them off of doing the investigation. RSM works for the board. RSM does not work for the superintendent. The RSM does not work for our attorney. They work for the board. If the board so instructs an audit, then it is nobody's place to call off that other than the board. So I was very disappointed in the decision that was given to RSM. I don't, I don't know for sure who got it back on track. I believe Mr. Susan or Dr. Mullins got that back on track as it should have been. Again, since that evaluation, if you recall, during the summer, or sometime after the evaluation, I had a very, well, for me, I guess would be heated conversation. I don't know if you've ever known me to have a heated conversation, about continuing contract vendors. And if we recall, Ms. Duskovich, you mentioned to us about going out on bid for employee leasing services. And I was surprised when we already had continuing contract vendors who can very easily accommodate a modification to that contract. And we had a very pointed discussion as to what we could and could not do. And it was made very clear to me by our attorney that we could not modify those contracts. Yet, and I believe you all got a copy of it, but I don't know if you read through the email chain on that same day, that two weeks prior, our attorney sent an email to our HR director saying that amending those contracts was one of the options. So two weeks prior, legal, proper legal guidance was given that they could amend the contract. Yet here at the dais, we had to argue whether or not that was capable of being done. We know very well it could be done. I was just outraged, and I bit my tongue because I knew the truth when we had that conversation. And then to see that that was knowledge prior to the conversation, yet we had an argument, very disappointing. If you all recall, and I know we didn't want to have this conversation in public, but when Dr. Blackburn got his 5.1% raise, for some reason, there was a belief by our attorney that that was retroactive for two years. That was not the intention of this board. Yet, that's what happened. We didn't, unfortunately, shame on us, there was an entry into a contract, which I don't know why a raise is put into an ongoing future contract, that apparently stated or implied that there was a two-year retroactive, which kicked out a 5.1% lump-sum payout over, for two years of service, which, by the way, through my research, found out that that's illegal to do retroactive at all. We did that in all fairness to our superintendent because that's what we do for employees in the bargaining units. But apparently, it's not legal under the superintendent, for a superintendent for a professional, for a professional contract. I was kind of shocked to find that out. And the way I found that out was during a conversation with Dr. Blackburn, when the issue came up about the 1.5% non-bargaining administrator raise, which we approved in December before the holidays, so those administrators would get their, their extra money before the holidays, that apparently it kicked out a 1.5% raise for Dr. Blackburn. And I discussed that with him and said, no, that's not what the board intended. And that shouldn't be included because the contract occurred after his previous evaluation. And he said, well, you're pretty brave in what you did with my 5.1%. And that kind of raised my eyebrow, because what are you talking about? Then to find out, and that is when I learned about that retroactive two years. I had a conversation with Mrs. Enville about these things, and she told me point-blank that the new language in the contract kicked out, engaged the 1.5% raise for Dr. Blackburn. Yet, that evaluation was prior to the contract language change. I've checked with other legal counsels, and they said, no, that the, you can't, you can't change a contract retroactive on a, retroactive on an event that happened prior. So Dr. Blackburn, in effect, got three raises on one evaluation, three years of raises on one evaluation. That is, that is wrong, in my opinion. Bad guidance. I request that Mrs. Enville meet with each of you to discuss the matter. I know that some of you spoke with her, but on your own accord. And I also know some of you never spoke to her about this matter. That is very disappointing when she's an employee of the board. We had a very long conversation via email about best and brightest, and I think it was very clear that the majority of this board felt that more teachers should be included in the best and brightest bonuses. Our attorney was very adamant that those positions did not, were not included. And that carried the day over the board's desire. Maybe we should have been a little more aggressive in making sure those employees were taken care of. I do congratulate Dr. Mullins in raising the flag and looking at including more people in these bonuses from the state. That is the appropriate thing to do. If you recall, at the last board meeting, we had a conversation about the, was it the RFP for the pharmacy? And I had asked whether there was a letter that was sent back to Cigna, a professional response to their letter to us, asking for us to include them in that bid for erroneous omission. And I was told I would get the letter. I still have no response two weeks later. I suspect Mrs. Enville is exceptionally busy and has other things to do as opposed to respond to us promptly. And I've learned that Mrs. Enville participates, and maybe by the direction of a board member, not by me, she participates in every cabinet member meeting and every cross-functional meeting. That has never happened in the past. While we wanted to create more capacity in having an attorney, which I agree with, having an in-house attorney will create more capacity, I don't see that sitting in meetings that don't need legal advice creates capacity. And clearly, and I know some board members have concerns about responsiveness, normally in the past, almost any legal request was responded to within 24, worst-case 48 hours. That does not happen anymore. So I don't see that we've built any capacity. We have heard, and as you know, from some of my emails requesting legal inflammation, legal information. I now specifically request that she doesn't check with staff, because our attorney is to give us legal opinions, not go to staff and find out what the staff thinks about a legal question. And that bothers me. I could ask staff just as easily. I want legal opinions when I ask for them, not cumulative collaborative opinions on the law. We discussed the armored car drivers carrying weapons. We received a very good narrative in March about that, that policy and statute do not permit armored car drivers from carrying a weapon, but that we have home rule capability of implementing policy. I agree with her 100% on that. I agree with her 100% on that. Then, towards the end of the summer, when I inquired the status, I was told, well, that was approved by the superintendent. Superintendent doesn't have any authority to approve that, just because he recommended the approval of the armored car contract. This board has the authority to approve policy, and it would have been nice if a policy was brought forward, because even collaborating with the sheriff on this, he agrees that those armored car drivers do not have the authority to carry on campus. I still believe that that needs to be readdressed to protect this board, and mostly to protect While her future legal opinions don't impact me, because this is my last meeting, they certainly impact the district, and they certainly impact those three of you that are going to continue on. And of most interest is of lately, is the fact that we are seeking another, we are seeking other legal counsel for this retaliation issue, yet the information funnel from the plaintiff's attorney is funneling through our attorney, who has regular, daily possibly, interaction with the plaintiff. I've never seen that before. Well, maybe it's not daily, but it's interaction. There's not another employee in this district that would have the luxury, if they were a plaintiff against the board, of interacting with our attorney. I think there are many concerns here. So, I figured being the outgoing board member, it'd be a lot easier for me than somebody else to bring this up, but I think it definitely needed to be aired, because I know there are concerns across the board. Unfortunately, this is not personal. I do like Mrs. Enville. I think she's a nice person. I enjoy working with her. I enjoy collaborating with her. She's very professional at doing that. But I'm sorry, I just don't have any confidence in the information coming back to me.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Ms. Belford.
First, I would like to point out that this is not the conversation that we want to have publicly.
I agree.
And I almost interrupted you, Mr. Ziegler, because we do our best not to focus on individuals when we're addressing issues publicly, which is my next statement. And the reason that I did not interrupt you is because of sunshine laws, we do not have an opportunity to have this discussion outside of the public eye. While I probably would have approached things a little bit differently, I respect that you are trying to look out for the good of the district. I'm the type of person that always looks in the mirror first, and several of the things that you mentioned, I think that we, as a leadership team, have to take responsibility for. We made the decision to hire Ms. Enville and to put her in this building, where she is interacting with the staff on a regular basis. We talked to her about the importance of having a legal view on the things that are going on in the district. And of these concerns, I don't know that they have been addressed with her previously. So, I'm not going to support your motion for termination, because I think that we, as a leadership team, owe it to Ms. Enville to have conversations with her about our concerns and do our best to resolve them, whether it is performance concerns or structure concerns, or where she is focusing her time. I think we have to take responsibility for that first. And certainly, doing our research, questioning, you know, opinions that are coming forward, perhaps we need to look at a different structure. We have had some conversation about concern of, you know, loyalty to staff, loyalty to district, or loyalty to board. But I think the onus of that is on us, because we are the ones who set up that structure. So, once again, I appreciate your concern for the district, but I think we have to take responsibility to have conversations with Ms. Enville if we have concerns, and try to address those prior to moving for termination at a public meeting.
Is there any other discussion?
Does she want to answer? Did you want to respond?
No. This is the board's discussion.
I didn't know.
Is there any other discussion? The only thing I'll say is that I'm just disappointed, because, to be quite honest with you, this is something that you've harbored since the day we went on the look for internal attorney. You were adamant that Harold Beisline was the greatest attorney and did such great things in this district, yet most of us didn't see it the same way. You have repeatedly stated, both privately and publicly, that since the day Ms. Enville was hired, that you were not happy that she was here. And so, I see this as a long-term thing, and it's disappointing that you bring it on the last day of your membership here. But it has been brought, and I agree with Ms. Belford, that she, the reason that we continued and didn't follow our own governance plan and direction, that we don't speak of individuals individually, was because of the things that Ms. Belford said. And...
So, point of order, then? Explain to me how we...
I'm sorry, what is the point of order?
Point of order is explain to me what the proper process is, just what point of order is for, for handling a situation like this amongst the board.
No, it's fine. That's what you want to do.
Trust me, not happy about the conversation, but unfortunately, sunshine dictates that this is how we voice our concerns about our employees. And this is not about anything personal. These are facts.
And I assume you've had this discussion on every one of these topics with Ms. Enville at length.
Some of them.
So, all these things that you've brought forward tonight, you have spoken with her individually about...
We had the most, we just wanted the dais, yes, absolutely. We had the one about the raises, yes, absolutely.
You spoke to her in private about each one of these things, every single thing that you just brought up. I wrote down, I think seventeen things I've got here, and I can read them for you if you'd like.
No, that's fine, but a lot of them we spoke about.
But you haven't discussed all of them with her?
I don't know if, I don't recall if I spoke all of them. It doesn't change the fact that they're facts.
That would be a leadership issue, and the fact that you employ her.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's true. That's why they've been...
Is there any other discussion? I'll call the question. Motion fails one four. Is there any other board reports? Anything else? Last thing I'll say is that I am in full support of Ms. Enville. I think she's done a phenomenal job in this district, and the support that she has given to that back row is well and above anything that I could have ever imagined. So, thank you, Ms. Enville, for your service, and I look forward to your continued service in support of my own children. Anything else? Dr. Mullins?
No, sir.
Meeting's adjourned.